Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the welcome everyone. I now call this special meeting in the KCRHA Implementation Board to order. Want to start by grounding our work and our theory of change, which is that if we create a homeless response system that centers people with lived experience, then we'll be able to focus on responding to needs and eliminating equities in order to end homelessness for all. Austin, will you please take the role?
Yes, just do one more look through our attendees to make sure no members are stuck in there. Doesn't look like it. So Pastor Anderson, member Anderson?
And to take myself off mute. Thank you. I'm here.
Member Caminos? Member Carvalho?
Got it. Yes, I'm here.
Been practicing. Member Shalmanak?
Just arrived. Thank you.
Member Meritz?
President.
Member Spotted Elk? Member McHenry Jr.? Member Pat now?
Here.
Member Brandon? Chair ready?
Here.
Member Rankin? And member Ross?
Present. Austin, I do see Okeisha in the attendees on the other left side.
I was looking at my notebook. Here we go. I'm promoting the panelists now. And member Brandon, are you there?
Yeah.
Hi, welcome. Clerk recognizes a quorum with eight members present.
Thank you, Austin. Appreciate it. Thank you to the board for joining us and for our public for joining us as well. Like to begin by acknowledging that King County is located on the unceded traditional land of the Coast Salish Peoples. We honor this land and its people, past and present, and we're committed to directing funding and resources to organizations led by and in support of Native and Indigenous people. We are grateful to be here together in community and excited to have a chance to talk about our five-year plan, which we've been, you know, which we've been working on for quite some time. Before doing so, though, do you want to take a moment and publicly thank Mark Doens, who has served as our inaugural CEO for the last two years, helping build this agency from scratch? We're grateful for all your tremendous and hard work over these years, Mark. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, very briefly, I just, it's been an honor and a privilege. And I've been working on this for five years since 2018. And I am really, really, really delighted with where this community has been able to get over that time, both in thinking about implementing regionalism all the way to a fully autonomous and functioning agency, going from no staff to 100 staff. The incredible work through severe weather, through the emergency housing vouchers. It's just, it's been a real honor. And I am really, really confident that this is the right team to take over. And, you know, just couldn't be more thrilled to hand the baton to Helen as interim and watch where you all go. And so this will be my last meeting with you all, I think. And I am, again, just really happy with what we've been able to do together.
Bye.
And now we have an opportunity to hear from our new interim CEO, Helen Howell. Helen and Alexis Mercedes-Rink, who's been leading the five-year plan work over the last six months, will be provide us with a presentation on where the plan stands now and then be available for questions after the presentation. Helen, Alexis, may I turn it over to you?
Thank you. I think I see the slide. So this is incredibly exciting and has been a long time in coming. I'd like to thank all of you for the time and energy you've invested in developing and fine tuning the plan. Also, I want to especially thank our colleague Alexis Mercedes-Rink for her tireless efforts to move this plan forward. Given all that you've invested in terms of providing detailed guidance and recommendations, I'm going to mainly focus on telling the story of our plan today. Next slide, please. The plan's overarching goal is to focus on unsheltered homelessness and bring people inside in a way that meets their needs. This goal aligns well with the formal charge of the authority to oversee the crisis response system for homelessness in King County. Of course, we have to continue coming together to be better aligned and coordinated if we're going to be successful in coming years. As we've shaped the five-year plan, we've taken the time to understand the full need and scale of the issue. In one year, 53,000 people experienced homelessness in King County. This number is much larger than we previously understood, and the system is currently not resourced to meet this need. In addition, Black and African Americans, Alaska Native American Indians, and trans and gender nonconforming people are very disproportionately represented among those experiencing homelessness in our region. The five-year plan is focused on addressing these needs within our current budget. It's grounded in our current reality and how we can be responsible stewards of the homeless response system. The plan focuses on how we can unify and coordinate funding and policy. It aims to improve system-wide efficiency, effectiveness, and accountability. And it invests in policies and programs with proven outcomes. However, this plan operates within the budget constraints, as I've mentioned earlier. We want to be clear with the public and with our boards that without new funding, we will not have enough shelter or housing to bring significantly more people inside. The five-year plan describes the work of the system on three different levels. What's happening at the service provider level with the network of homeless services and in terms of system-to-system connections. We've determined that if we get to a place where every service provider has what they need to succeed, our network of service providers are connected and coordinated to better serve each individual's needs. And finally, multiple systems are working together to prevent homelessness, then we will see a decrease in homelessness in our community. The plan is practical in that it works within current resource levels. As stewards of public dollars, we have a responsibility to make the most of the resources available. We will build upon what service providers already do well, such as the family shelter intake line provided by Mary's Place, while at the same time investing in proven solutions that have the best outcomes, such as programs that are buy-in for and target our Indigenous and Black communities. We will fund the programs people want to participate in. For example, there is important research supporting the use of non-congregates shelter. We also will continue to advocate for fair wages for our frontline workers. Looking at our network of homeless services, we can improve measurement and data to better match people to services while also improving system accountability. An example here is the work we're doing to develop a tool that will show real-time shelter bed availability. We'll also coordinate between providers to make the system more efficient while also increasing the use of federal social programs such as Medicaid and SNAP. Through continued efforts to connect to other systems such as healthcare, education, and foster care, we can prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. For example, currently, of the young people aging out of foster care in King County, 35% become homeless within one year. That's a statistic that haunts me, and I have to believe that it's a problem that we can solve. We'll also work to ensure that these systems are coordinating so that there's no wrong door. Meaning no matter which system and individual enters, they're connected with the services they need. We'll know we're successful when we see that we have more shelter beds and housing options. People have the services they need and can move quickly through the system. Fewer people return to living outside after shelter, and more people are permanently housed. Under the five-year plan, we're striving toward a future state where people experiencing homelessness in King County will be able to access services no matter where they live, regardless of race, age, gender, or other identity. Where service providers will have real-time data that allows them to serve people faster and more effectively. Where social systems work together to prevent homelessness. And where communities will see less unsheltered homelessness. So as authority, we're doing our best to focus on bringing our unsheltered neighbors inside and doing so in a way that meets their needs as quickly as possible. We have a lot of work to do, and we can't do it alone. Our strong base of skilled service providers who know what it takes to do this work well are critical. And I wouldn't be here if I didn't believe that we can, in fact, solve these challenges together. But the need is greater than ever, and it will take all of us over the coming years to be successful. It will take all of us, cities, the business community, philanthropy, providers, and advocates. We all need to come together. Again, on behalf of the RHA staff, I want to thank each and every one of you Implementation Board members for your engagement on the development of the five-year plan over the last year, actually. Special appreciation to Systems Planning Committee chaired by Implementation Board Member Shalmanak as well. And I want to express tremendous gratitude again to Alexis for shepherding the plan through all sorts of iterations and for taking on the responsibility of ensuring the incorporation of the feedback and recommendations we received, and there were many. And finally, I'd like to thank our fearless leader through all of this, the founding CEO of the Regional Authority. Thanks for your leadership, Mark. And with that, I'll open it up to questions. Oh, something happened here. I've lost my sound, so I apologize.
Great. Well, Board Member Ross, I see your hand up.
It's not a question, it's a compliment. I just want to thank you for that excellent opening.
I have a layup for you. Thanks. Helen, do you mind just walking us through the roadmap from here in terms of the process? And if what we have now is the final plan, or if there will be sort of like a editing process down the road to do, to do that? Actually, I remember there was talk about like some launch efforts and so on that were going to happen.
Well, first, I think I want to acknowledge that the five-year plan is more like guideposts and that it has to be a living document and involved as we learn. In terms of detailed process, I will refer to Alexis. Go ahead, Alexis.
In terms of today's process, as it relates to the plan today, as it is presented is before you for consideration, there are some amendments that have been proposed and will be up for discussion today. But we are slated for the board to vote today in which that version of the plan will then go to the governing committee, where the governing committee can take up an amendment process, and the governing committee is slated to meet on June 1st.
And then is there a plan to do like other versions of it that can be more interactive for people in the community? Will there be like a series of events to educate people on it for those things in the works for us?
Really appreciate that question. Yes, subregional planning team, as well as a number of other staff teams are looking to bring the plan out and elements of the plan to our regional tables and other base building spaces and work in partnership with provider coalitions to really make sure folks are familiarized and know what the path forward looks like. That will be also a great launching point for us to start our more in-depth planning efforts around procurement, for example, or subregional implementation.
Thank you.
Other questions and comments from the board? Yeah, I also want to take a moment to really highlight how important the feedback from the community has been over the entirety of the process and not just in terms of like the people showing up to meetings, you know, making public comment, et cetera, but also the vast number of people who came to listening sessions met with Alexis and her wonderful team. Because what you find is sort of in addition to the, within the plan, you have a compendium of many, many, many tasks ahead, right? And to identify those tasks and identifying all of the various problems that people are facing out there. You know, the fact you can't, there's no way to know where shelter beds are open at any given time, for example, is a really serious problem and one that will be something that we will need to address as a system, but dozens of others. And I'm grateful to the community for that feedback. That's sort of led to, I think, a more refined plan over these months. Other comments and questions about the plan in general?
Chair, if I may, I believe I see Board Member Shalmanak trying to make comments. Just wanted to highlight that for your attention. Hopefully, we can.
John, please go ahead. John's chair, so this mic is not working, unfortunately. Hopefully we can get it fixed here soon. The other comments and questions from the board? Well, what are you most excited about?
Okay, so I'll definitely have a statement to make, but I just wanted, I did have two, what I would call conforming amendments to offer. And just when were we planning on doing that? But that was the question that I had.
Just momentarily.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it, John. Why don't we do this? So just to describe the sort of process for amendments and such, to, we will, I will ask for a motion to vote on this resolution to move forward the plan. And then once that is opened up, I'll ask for motions for amendments to the plan, at which time we'll go through both of the amendments one at a time and thoroughly discuss each before moving on to the next. Any final comments, so, other discussion before we jump to that? Now, do we have a motion to vote on Resolution 2023-07 to move forward the five-year plan?
I'd like to make that motion somehow. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. And would we have a second? I was like Christopher. Okay. And now, do we have any motions to amend the five-year plan?
So I, the only ones that I've seen that were, were the two from me, so I will make a motion to approve Amendment One that was offered and is part of your packet. Is there a second?
Then do we have a second? One second, John. Or actually, I should probably let someone else.
I'm happy to second that. Thank you.
Yeah, just, if I can speak to it, yeah, go ahead. So if I can speak to this. Yeah, congregate care has been a important issue for me in the discussion. It's also been a very important issue for the subregions who currently are offering some comprehensive emergency homeless services, in particular, the East and the South County. The way I've structured this is if, in terms of the effect statement, if you look at what is in the executive summary, the difference between congregate and non-congregate. And it does state in the executive summary that congregate shelters also play an important role in the system as a number of the subregions currently rely on congregate options for emergency shelter. We also, it also points out that that the congregate options tend to vary in terms of whether or not there is an ability to walk up to the shelter. In the testimony that we received during the the review process, I was struck by some of the voices from those who have lived experience of the importance of this ability to have that. That, that step up and the ability to get in at different times. I'm aware of the way the shelters operate here on the east side. That is something that is possible under that. And so I would like to, and I think is a great way to entice the the East County and the South County to become a part of this and make it truly regional, that we recognize that. Number one, that while we're going to, if we do have extra money, we're going to concentrate on non-congregate. But the congregant could be in certain instances available for that. And in Amendment Two, I just provide some background for that. So I will I will stop there and open for other discussion or questions that people have. But again, I think this makes it, I mean, I think it makes the plan more consistent with what's said in the executive summary.
John, just for clarity sake, is it, like us to just focus on one amendment at a time?
Of course.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
It may actually be easier, Austin, could you put the First Amendment up on the screen? So we can all just see that together. I know we have it in our packets, but maybe also easier for the public.
Yes, I'll just give me one second. I'll pull it up right now.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Can y'all see it?
Yep.
Perfect. Let me see how I can zoom this better. There you are.
So just for the quick purposes, it strikes in the key actions, the words non-congregate shelter or non-congregate, but rather expand shelter and emergency housing bed and units if there's more money. And then it makes a statement that, again, what is already in the plan, that there's a preference, but that we would work with the subareas to consider both non-congregate and congregate housing as appropriate.
Do we have a discussion on this amendment? Yeah, it's okay, John. I just wanted to share a couple thoughts. I think the I think there was a large focus on like, what is the type of shelter that is the best shelter? And I think this idea that actually we should think of temporary housing generally and really just consider all potential options and as appropriate, it's a reasonable one. Because there's quite a lot of variability, both in the effectiveness of certain types of non, certain non-congregant shelters and certain congregate shelters. And the overall effect is not that we will this will force us to expand current shelter, but allow us that option. From my perspective, seems reasonable, but open it to others' discussion. All right, hearing no more discussion then. Why don't we vote, give a voice vote? If you support the amendment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, the I have it, this resolution or this amendment passes. Thanks, John, for bringing that, bringing that up. Can we, Austin, move to our next amendment for consideration?
Absolutely. One sec.
And can we get a motion to on the Second Amendment?
I'd move to approve the Second Amendment. Move this second.
For a second. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can everyone see the Second Amendment now, or Amendment Number Two?
John, would you share a little bit about your thinking here?
Sure, though this, so this goes pretty far into the, into the plan. As you can see, it's line 1415. So this, I believe, was in Appendix C, and this was a discussion of non-congregate versus congregate housing. And I just wanted to again reiterate that as we go through this, that congregate housing that has worked in other areas is, seems to be, again, a possibility. Recognizing again that non-congregate has been shown to be a better option for moving people through the system. But I know the East Subarea and I believe the South Subarea have congregate housing. So, and this was based again on comments, quite frankly, that were made by IB Board members with lived experience during the our discussion in committee.
Other discussion, if you may, John?
Yeah, sorry, I tried to speak earlier. But I just wanted to, for all the reasons that member Shalmanak spoke to, and again, just also throwing in my personal appreciation for him stepping up and sharing the Subcommittee to this process and him being responsive with this amendment before us. I'm fully supportive for the reasons that's all been shared so far, and this note, line five, too, just in terms of anecdotal one, the East Subarea, I think is the goal in terms of the spelling of that, that line. But yeah, totally supportive of this and our conversations with other suburban cities. So looking forward to the vote.
Other discussion? My points? My points? All right, I'm gonna call myself one more time, and that's it. Um, the, uh, I guess the, the only point I would make is that congregate versus non-congregate, like even though, um, it's separate from the question of twenty-four-seven access. Like those are two different, um, uh, sort of qualities of a shelter. Um, and you can have non-congregate shelter that is twenty-four-seven and congregate shelter that is not twenty-four-seven. Just to make that point. All right, other discussion? All right. Hearing none, uh, let's vote by via voice vote once again. If you support the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Any extensions? All right, ayes have it, the amendment passes. All right. We now have, uh, two amendments to the five-year plan. Do we have any further discussion on the five-year plan as a whole, uh, with the amendments as noted? And then I see your hand up. I'm not sure if that's still from prior. Okay. All right. We're hearing no more discussion. Austin, would you please take role to vote on Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-seven? Uh, the resolution, uh, uh, to pass the five-year plan with the amendments as, uh, previously noted?
Absolutely. Um, perfect. Member Anderson?
Yes.
Member Caminos?
Yes.
Member Carvalho?
Yes.
Member Shalmanak?
Yes.
Member Merritts?
Yes.
Member Spotted Elk?
Yes.
Member McHenry Jr.? Member Pat now?
Uh.
Member Brandon?
Yes.
Chair ready?
Yes.
Member Rankin? And finally, Member Ross?
Yes.
Uh, the clerk recognizes, uh, Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-seven passes with ten yays, no nays, and no extensions, two excused.
Awesome, fantastic. Excited to send this to the governing committee for, uh, their review and, uh, hopefully approval. This is a very exciting moment for us. Um, you know, we do have next on our agenda, discussion of a, uh, building lease, uh, and vote on Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-eight. We are, however, waiting on, uh, the funding for that particular lease to still come through. So if there's no objection, I would recommend that the system advocate building lease discussion vote be postponed to our next regular meeting in three weeks. John?
Well, maybe I should have jumped in on this earlier before we voted. But I really, uh, want to thank, uh, Alexis Mercedes-Ring and the crew that worked with us through the System Review Committee. They were particularly great at capturing, um, what was said both by the public, by, uh, the providers uh, and by others. Uh, I appreciate the work that fellow IB board members did on that. And I think we've ended up with a, a plan that is really focused on what our job is at the KCRHA. Um, and I hope that it brings people together and, um, really works toward being able to, to solve the emergency housing issue. So thank you to the staff work and thank you to the board.
Thank you, John. Really appreciate it. Um, hearing no objections about, uh, the postponement, we'll, we'll discuss that Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-eight or next regular meeting. Um, any last comments before we ask for, uh, motion to adjourn? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Period, Anderson. I saw move that we adjourned.
All right, second.
All right. Then thank you to the IB, to our staff, to the public, um, we uh, for a wonderful meeting, and the next meeting will, the implementation board will be held on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Um, the physical meeting location will be announced on the KCRHA website of the Implementation Board, uh, section prior to the meeting. And with that, we are adjourned. Take care, all.
Alexis, congratulations.
Bye.
Thank you all.
So much.